All right, I think we're about ready to go. Everybody on the council been running over here asking me what's all these people doing here? I said, "I don't know about all of them." I said, "Some of them I talked to about it, but we usually don't have anybody but the media." We, uh, former county commissioner, we appreciate you being here tonight and thank everybody for coming and having an interest in what's going on in your city. So, we welcome you to attend whenever you would like. At this time, I call our meeting to order. We are offering invocation, I will, and then we'll have the pledge of allegiance. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, for all the blessings that you continue to bestow here upon us. We know that you always look favorably to us. We've come up short so many times, but we know that it's through your guidance, your direction, but mostly for your love for us. When we are sinners to a high degree, we just know that you continue to love us even though sinful as we are. We pray, Lord, for those who are so much less fortunate than us, those around the world. We pray for peace in all the countries, including our own. We just pray for our community, and may we be able to stamp out violence and crime and have a good place for people to live, raise their children, work, and enjoy life. We ask these things in your son's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item is to approve the business agenda. Everybody's had an opportunity to review that. If nobody has any conflicts or needs to make any changes to the agenda, we need a motion to approve it as it is presented.
I make a motion to approve the agenda statement.
Second.
Motion is by Councilman Bell and a second is by Councilman Stainback. Any more discussion on the matter? If there is none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The agenda will be approved as it is presented. Item four is public comment. Under unscheduled, we do have three individuals that have signed up to speak tonight. We would ask that when you come to the podium to speak, that you just state your name, where you live, and Mr. Dickens, I believe you're the first one on here. We generally allow the individual three minutes on unscheduled public comments, so if you could try to contain your comments to that, please.
Yes, sir. I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. I'm a little west of here. I'm in Rappis about forty years. I'm living way back fifteen years, but I frequently come to Rappis. I'm a property owner, Rappis man. I always pass out, cause I call at night last four, the street, the building, the walls. I had an automobile accident. I did have the same number had it, so. My automobile was a sucker. The first picture depicts eight cars at the intersection. The second picture depicts a car in the middle of the intersection. And the third picture depicts a car trying to get out of Chick-fil-A, all those intersections, where the accident, my car, happened. Item number four is the police report. And I believe the police report is wrong in a couple ways. It doesn't mention the fact that if you turn to the next page, page five, and you can see the damage to my automobile. And looking at the second page on the police report, you can see that the car was hit in the right panel, or left panel. I'm just wondering how...
I'm just wondering how my car could be hit. Looked like it was hit quarterly. But Mr. Stainback and Mr. Jackson can probably hit him on that, but it doesn't look like it was hit in the right, in the left quarter panel, so that police report is incorrect. Also, page six depicts our car off the road. The person that hit my car knocked it clean off the road. It's a thirty-five mile an hour speed limit there, in that zone, and I believe the person was speeding. Haven't seen anything about a witness. I'm not a, I'm not an insurance adjuster, and I don't expect you, you, the council, to be an insurance adjuster. I'm just saying the police report is again, it's wrong. Now, if you turn to page seven, this is the real nightmare that's going on out there. I understand that the mayor just said that it, this area is not under the Rappis jurisdiction, yet a Rappis policeman was called to the accident. Why wasn't the Halifax County policeman called, or North Carolina State Trooper called? That's my question. If Rappis is not in charge of this area, you know, what's going on? Why, why, why wasn't they called instead of a city, city policeman? I'm gonna go over this thing here real quick. Like eighteen ways a vehicle can go at this intersection. I've never seen a quagmire. You look at the lines and the arrows, the people can go in and out and everything. It's only two stop signs there. It's one at Chick-fil-A. I'm pretty sure Chick-fil-A put that one up. I'm not sure whether the city did or the county did. It is one on Fourth Street. It's a thirty-five mile an hour zone, like I said, and it's two signs between highway...
Mr. Dickens, go ahead, try to sum it up.
Oh, okay, my way. Can I sum it up?
Yeah. Go ahead.
All right.
Still, just go ahead and try to...
It's, it's two signs between the bridge and 158, the new road. There's no stop light at that intersection. There's no caution light there. There's no speed bumps. You know, the hospital, everybody's been to the hospital, the speed bumps going to the hospital. If you have a heart attack, did you rather get to the hospital quicker, or rather you go get a cream latte quicker? Speed bumps is the answer right here to stop this traffic. Either that or a four-way stop sign. It's also bushes blocking the view of traffic. And roundabout, you couldn't put one there. That had to go back to two thousand and four, when the place was, uh, under construction out there. There's no, no four-way stop signs there. It would be a great place for one. There's one at Carolina and Fifth Street. There's one at Hamilton and Fifth Street. And I bet you a ten dollars to a doughnut, there's more traffic in this intersection in thirty minutes than it is on those two stop signs in a total twenty-four hours. Yet somebody has failed. Somebody has failed, I don't know whether it's the city, or whether it's the county. I also want to point out, coming off of 158, you go around these curves there, Logan's and whatever, and you straighten out, it's a twenty-five mile an hour sign, the caution sign. It's another, it's not another speed limit sign on that highway going out of town. On the opposite side, when you cross the bridge, that's a thirty-five mile an hour sign there, and it's another thirty-five mile an hour sign at, after you pass Chick-fil-A. Yet you're going through those same curves coming the other way, it's twenty-five miles an hour. The same curve going back this way, you can go thirty-five miles an hour. What's going on? What happened to the county and the city with that? It's, it's, you know, one side of the road is thirty-five, one side of the road is twenty-five. Something needs to be done out there. The towing bill. I was not called as the owner of the vehi...
We've got one more minute.
I, I was not called as the owner of the vehicle. Look at the towing bill over here.
Yes, sir.
Thirteen hundred and seventy-eight dollars to tow my vehicle away. The guy at 158 is, I hate to call him, what I, what I called him, so I won't call that in front of you guys, but the, the towing bill is actually made out to Rappis Police Department, at the Bobby Martin, who I thought was dismissed because of inadequate or improper things with the police department. Why is it, what's going on here? If you look at the tow hookup bill, four hundred and seventy-five dollars, unheard of. The towing administration, if you ever heard of that? One would pick up the phone, type up the bill, it's costing me three hundred and twenty-five dollars. This is, this is what, the, the gate fee, the guy told me, if it goes out the gate, he charged everybody a hundred and twenty-five dollars for going out the gate. It, the pullout fee, my car was off the road, it didn't need a pullout fee, and then charged two hundred and twenty-five dollars for, for, for cleanup. The other insurance company didn't have cleanup. Anyway, I appreciate what you do for the city. Thank y'all very much for taking time to listen to me. I, I, I hope I can get some satisfaction in, in what's going on right there, and I hope that the city will help me pay this bill. Thank you, guys. Thank you, everyone.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Dickens. I would just like to clarify, we were discussing the matter about the, the information going back to stop signs and speed bumps and that type of thing. I'd ask the city manager, Mr. Phillips, I told him that I understood that Premier, is Premier landing main, that street? Now, we're not talking about law enforcement. We're talking about the street. Is the street maintained by the state or the city?
It's maintained by the state.
Okay. That, that's what I told you, Mr. Dickens. You know, we, and, but it is in the city limits. It's, it's kinda like, it's kinda like the avenue. The avenue is a state road.
Premier is in the city limits until you get through the bridge, you're talking about going out of town, about before you get to 155, just within that, it's in the town.
So, you know, you ask a question, why did Rappis Police come, not Sheriff Department? And that's, that's why we, we police that. But we don't maintain the highway, and we don't put up stop signs and speed bumps and that type of thing out there. Am I not correct in that?
Yeah, Mayor, if I could, if I could clarify. What, what the mayor is saying is absolutely correct, and I know it's, it's frustrating, and I go through that intersection, maybe not every day, but pretty regularly, and it's bad. I, I think it's bad, and I'm the city attorney up here saying this. But the city has no control over that intersection. We cannot go illegally put up stop signs, we can't legally put up speed bumps. There is nothing that the city or the county is empowered to do with respect to that intersection because it is a state-maintained road. The state has to do that. And we've had, and I know that this issue has, I believe this issue has become before council before. I know that there's been discussions with the state over that intersection before, especially as it was kind of expanded, and, and maybe the city manager can say more about that if she wants to, down, down Premier Boulevard, so that now you have folks coming in, essentially, just like you said, you know, they are out of the county, off of, off of Exit 171, coming in sometimes, I think, at higher speeds than they should be. But unfortunately, there is, if, if this was, if this was any of the city-maintained roads, which, and I know it's, it's difficult, it's not like there's a sign on individual roads that say, "Hey, the state of North Carolina maintains this, the city maintains this," when you're driving down them. But if it was any of the city-maintained roads, we could do that. For instance, I know that, that years ago, over on the Little Fifth Street extension that runs there behind, yeah, that, that if you go, if you go, if you go further past, there were speed bumps put up over there. Those, that's a city-maintained road. We, we have the authority to do that. Unfortunately, in this case, we can't, and there's, there's no way, other than asking the state, which I know has been done before, to reconsider the organization of that. There's no other way to, to, to make that happen. And, and I know, and I'd like to say, I, I hate that, and I know that you're the one that's, that's harmed by it, and you know, we're sitting up here saying, "There's nothing we can do," and I know that's frustrating, but that, that's unfortunately the case. And, and with respect to law enforcement, just as the mayor said, it is in the city of Rappis, so just like we have, just like our law enforcement patrols, all of the other state-maintained roadways in the city of Rappis, that's the, and usually those are your more primary kind of streets, like Tenth Street, Julian Rallsbrook, Ronna Cabinet. Their law enforcement jurisdiction exists out there. They can issue traffic citations, file police reports, things like that. I will say, if you have an issue with the police report, speak with your insurance company, and also, I would say, maybe speak with the, the officer. But that's, that's kind of where things are. But I, I appreciate you kind of bringing this up, cause it's, it's the kind of thing that, that matters, kind of creating a record that there is an issue out there. So, we, we normally don't allow back and forth, but if we need to talk after this, I'll be glad to.
And I would just like to add for the record that after the Dickens came and spoke with me at City Hall about a week or so ago, well, it was towards the end of last week, I reached out to DOT and expressed the concerns that we had talked about during that meeting about the speed and about lowering that, and inquired about the process to make that request with DOT. And so, and our local engineer, Greg Keeter, responded back and said he sent it over to the Traffic Division, and they would get back with me. So, we are looking at proactive measures to make some improvements there.
Well, could you, you know, when you hear something back from maybe Mr. Keeter, he's a local person, just forward it to Mr. Dickens and let him know where, where we are.
That's my plan.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Ms. Hasty?
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Ruthie Hasty, and I live on Ransom Street. And I moved here about forty-four years ago when I got married. My neighborhood was very clean and quiet. People worked hard for what they had and took care of it. Well, there's an issue later in the new business about the house at fourteen oh seven Forest Street. Well, for about fifteen years, there's been no power and no water. There's a lot of activity there, a lot of people who live there. There's a lot of foot traffic, cars and trucks, bicycles, skateboards. If people can hang out there, they can. I'm sure the police have been called multiple times. To me, it's a safety issue for the neighbors. It's a public health issue when you see grown men go out there, drop their pants, and do what they need to do. I have a twelve-year-old granddaughter that lives with me. Her bus stop is at the corner of that street, so she has to walk that way to get home. I don't think any of you all would want that in your neighborhood, and I don't think you'd want your children or grandchildren to see that. And I wish something could be done ASAP. There's a house adjoining that property that's been empty for two years. Some of the, Mr. Brown, I think he lives there now, his visitors are camping out in the backyard of the empty lot. I do believe they are running current from another house because the window unit was on this morning, it has not been on. There's been different window coverings that were off the home when the tenants moved about two years ago. Now, there's window coverings on there, so I feel like somebody's going in and out of the house. And I spoke to the manager about two years ago about this, and I was told that the city could not evict the owners. I get that. But why can't the city make them have water and electricity and clean that filth up? Because people are just laying on the, the ground on piles of clothes, hanging out and sleeping, and, you know. I'm sure there's a lot of illegal activity going on there, but I don't know for sure. But as a resident, taxpayer, and a grandmother, I'd like to see it. I'd really like to see it just bulldozed, but, I mean, really. Because unless something is done, these people are gonna continue to hang out and get everything free they can and not take care of it. And I know the city, the public works have, when I call and say, you know, "It's time for a cleanup," they're usually right on it, do a good job of that, but it's just a continuous cycle that needs to be cleaned up. And like I say, I don't think you all would want that in your neighborhood, or your children to see that, and, you know, by all means, ride by and look at it. You can't miss it.
Okay. Do you stay in conversation with the code enforcement and the police department, letting them know what your, the things you're telling us?
I haven't lately, cause I've had other things going on at home, but I have in the past. One person would tell me that it was a state issue. The state would tell me it's a county. The county would tell me it's a city, so...
Okay. I, I would, I would still just keep it on the burner.
Oh, yeah. Definitely. I mean, I see it every day.
I mean, cause I sympathize with you, nobody should, should have to deal with that, living in a community.
Yeah. And you never know if they're gonna break out in a brawl, and what would happen after that. I mean, they don't care about anything.
Thank you for coming.
Okay. Thanks for your time.
If I may, stay, stay tuned and don't go anywhere. Give us about, it's, we'll get to that agenda meeting, that agenda item pretty soon, and I think you'll get some answers.
And I have pictures if you want to see it also.
Just stay tuned.
Item five is the minutes of August the fifth. Everybody's had a chance to review them. If there's no need for change, we need a motion to approve them.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the August five, twenty twenty-five regular city council meetings as drafted.
Second.
The motion is by Mr. Stainback, second is by Ms. Bryant. Do we have any more discussion on the matter? If there is none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The motion minutes would be approved. Under new business, consideration of a budget amendment, I call on the Finance Director, Ms. Johnson.
Good evening. The police department received a grant from ECU for, it's an AED grant, in the amount of four thousand dollars. So, it asks that you approve Budget Ordinance twenty twenty-five point twenty-six.
Yeah. Okay. We need a motion to approve the four thousand dollar grant.
I'll make a motion to adopt Budget Amendment Ordinance number twenty twenty-five point twenty-six, in the amount of four thousand dollars on ECU F AED grant.
Okay. A motion is by Councilman Jackson, and a second by Councilman Bell. Is any more discussion on this? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The motion would be approved. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Item B, we call on the attorney, Mr. Davis.
So, just to kind of introduce this matter, what is on, but we, we put it on the agenda for tonight so that council would have an opportunity to review the draft agreement that's been circulated between myself as city attorney and the attorney for the Rappis Greatest School District regarding school resource officers. It's time for us to review that agreement and to consider, and we've revised it substantially, at least in the draft. I know I've circulated it to council, and I've already received some feedback. The, and, and I know that the school board, I believe that it's on their agenda for tonight as well to consider. I've, I've had some discussion with council members, and I think, I, I think there may be a motion as far as potentially deferring action on this until the, our next council meeting to see what the school board's comments are. I support that wholeheartedly. I will say, just so that nobody catastrophizes it or assumes that, or assumes the worst, this is just the kind of legalese of the, the background agreement between the school and the, and the city regarding the, the resource officers. Currently, school resource officers are employees of the school district. Their certifications are held by the Rappis Police Department, which is functionally how they're able to operate on school premises as, as law enforcement officers. And so, this will not affect anything. I know that school's starting next week. I think the city manager is gonna speak some about the, the preparations and the communication with the school, kind of leading up to that, to, to plan for students returning. I know it's on everybody's mind, but the, this, this background agreement will have no effect, no effect that, that, that really matters with respect to, you know, whether those kids have protection, or any kind of liability, or anything else. Like I say, it's just kind of planning for the future and kind of the, the kind of background agreement, you know, we would continue on the, the old language, on the old agreement we have. So, that said, that said, I, it, it doesn't materially change anything if we defer it tonight.
So, do we, do I need to call for a motion? And if we don't get one, we do it, or somebody just make a motion to defer?
I would say, I would say, whatever the, whatever the motion is gonna be, whether it's to consider the passage of it tonight, or whether it's to defer it to the next meeting. But I think a motion would be proper, whatever the intention of the council is.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, sir. Councilman Stainback.
Being that this is on the agenda for the GSD school board tonight, I would like to table this until we, until they decide what they wanted to do first, and then we take a look at that, and then we would take some sort of action at that time.
Okay. Motion on the floor by Councilman Stainback, second by Councilman Jackson. Any more discussion? If there is none, motion will be table till the next, next meeting? Is that correct to say? Okay. Motion will be table, okay? Attorney Davis, you have the next item also?
I do. My job is made easier thanks to Ms. Hasty. You covered a lot of the groundwork I was going to lay. We have a problem over on fourteen oh seven Forest Street, and it's, it's time that, that something happened over there. You'll find in your agenda packet, an ordinance from the city of Rappis. I won't read the, the full text of it, but essentially, we have discovered that this property has not had water and electricity for a while, it, it seems, and there are, I'll say, corroborating circumstances based on what the other residents have observed out there about folks using the restroom outside. There's some other issues out there at the property that are, that aren't addressed in this. This is, this is the, the, this is the legal avenue that we could use to address it as quickly as possible. There are some other legal avenues available to us for those other issues, but those are much more delayed, or those are, are remedies that more have, are more in the civil realm. And so, that's the reason we, I, I chose to put this before council, is this. So, essentially, based on the minimum housing code violations, it is, if, if council approves the ordinance as drafted, the code enforcement officer would be authorized to order this dwelling vacated effective twelve PM on Thursday of this week. And so, and until such time as it is repaired and altered and improved to be able to fully comply with our minimum housing code and, and those other aspects as far as, you know, putting the lights on, putting the water on, all the different aspects, and there, that wouldn't be something where they could just call the city and say, "Hey, I've done it." No, you know, city code inspectors would actually have to go out there and verify that. And then if they, if they fail to do it again, you know, then we, we, we deal with that. But until such time as, as it's repaired, if somebody goes back over there and is, and is there inside the house, the building's unfit for human habitation, and it actually says in this ordinance that further occupation or failure to vacate the dwellings will constitute a class one misdemeanor. And so, if, if after this, if that's not done, anybody over there, I think the police department will have the authority to arrest them and prosecute them. So, I, I wish, I wish in, in situations like this, there was something much, that was instant, that we could snap our fingers and make it happen. This is about as close as it comes. So, that being the case, I would ask council to consider, to consider the Ordinance twenty twenty-five dot twenty-seven, and, you know, then, you know, city officials will take it from there.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Ordinance twenty twenty-five point twenty-seven, directing the code enforcement officer to order the dwelling located in fourteen oh seven Forest Street to be unfit for human habitation.
Motion by Councilman Jackson, second by Councilman Bell. Any more discussion on this matter? If there is none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The motion will be approved. All right. Thank you all. Ms. Trainum, the city manager's report.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Just a few brief updates on our activities. Just as a friendly reminder that tomorrow, you have your strategic planning retreat with the Hayes Group that will start at nine o'clock in the morning at the Canal Museum on Jackson Street. And another reminder that on Friday, August the twenty-second, beginning at five thirty until eight thirty PM, the Fire Department will have its annual fire safety fair at Kirkwood Adams, and several community activities, and incentives for students. They've filled over a hundred backpacks with school supplies, and some other things for students going back to school. So, come out and join us Friday night at Kirkwood. Community input for the strategic planning is... Community input for the strategic planning is being sought right now. There, in your packet, you'll have a survey here with a flyer, there's a link there, and also a QR code for completing that survey that's scheduled to close on the 22nd. Earlier today, we participated, staff and I participated in a grant technical assistance introduction to the Halifax County Business Horizons Local Economic Development Grant Program. I sent the information to you all earlier in an email, but the Horizons has funding available to support projects that's helped to spur economic development in various categories. And so, the grant program includes additional details, but the applications are due by October the 1st, and awards will be announced on October the 9th. So if you have any ideas, we'll present to you some ideas about potential applications there, but the minimum amount to request is $15,000, and the maximum is a $50,000 award. The Main Street program is, again, under renewal and kicking off. You'll see a test in front of you. The, our Main Street director, Ashley Thomas, is going door to door and starting to meet our Main Street District merchants and property owners, and has developed an online tool to help get those registration and get that contact information. And so, we're asking folks that are either interested in relocating to the avenue or have any interest in participating in those functions to fill out one of those forms that's available. If you scan the QR code, it'll take you immediately to the link there, asking for your information. The Parks and Rec Department stays busy really year-round. Athletics continue throughout the year. Schools are returning, and so we're seeing the school uses of our fields increase, as well as local soccer and football practices as well. The tennis season for the high school has begun, and their matches are held in the city courts behind TJ Davis. As long as the weather is warm, the splash pad will remain open, likely till about the end of September, depending on our season. The indoor pool has resumed its regular Saturday hours now that the outdoor pool has closed. And in September, swimming lessons will resume at the pool, as well as classes coordinated with the community college for SCUBA. The Senior Center will host a happy hour tomorrow, and then on the 26th, we'll have coffee with the director about needs of the Senior Center. Also, saving the date for October the 9th for the Annual Aging Expo at Kirkwood Adams. And then, in the upcoming weeks, we'll start scheduling appointments for Medicare Part D open enrollment. And then in September, on September 13th, the Runcanal 5K is scheduled as well. For our next meeting in September, the Planning Department is drafting revisions to our ordinance to comply with changes in our flood plane mapping and the ordinance implementation that comes down from the Federal Emergency Management Agency, or FEMA, and those need to be adopted prior to the 19th, and so we have sufficient time in those meetings. A list of some of the special events that are under review or upcoming is provided. Just this past Friday, the amphitheater, Carolina Crosses Amphitheater held its first show with Jamie Johnson, that we're aware they sold over 3,000 tickets, and the event went fairly well. Our staff, coordinating with emergency action plans, were very well-prepared in advance, and we'll have an after-action review with the owners ahead of their next concerts and events as well. But the preparation and anticipation of potential problems goes a lot, went a long way to helping for a successful event. The Fire Department is conducting its annual CPR and first aid courses with the Graded School District as well. And then also, the Police Department has just had, there, there's two crossing guard positions that, there's two candidates that are in the process of the final hiring process for those. They will serve, they'll be ready to serve for the back-to-school, that will occur on Monday, the 25th. The school crossing guards will serve at Challenger Middle School, as well as Belmont and Manning Elementary School. Again, remember, last year, we had a few, we've had a few little hiccups about crossing guards, and some citizens came to the council meeting, and so we understand that there could be some potential changes coming at Belmont with the traffic circulation, and despite that, with school going back, we want nothing but safety for our residents and for the students that, and also to facilitate that safe ingress and egress. Our Public Works Department has recently painted the crosswalks and the school zone markings as well around the schools. And with some pending changes with potential for Belmont, we've reached out to the school and offered some assistance with some joint messaging, and so we understand there could be some changes coming as far as from, that come from a Department of Transportation traffic study that was completed in September of 2024. But at this point, we don't know when those changes will be implemented, but we want to try to facilitate that in as safe a method as possible, and wish everyone a safe and welcome back to school year, and ready for my kids to go back too. So, subject to any questions you may have, that concludes my report.
Anybody have any questions of the manager? Okay. Ms. Johnson, Finance Report.
Okay. Good evening again. So July does not look great, but that's typical. So for the month of July, our year-to-date receipts was around $98,000, and our expenditures are around $1.8 million, but that's because we pay all of our insurance upfront, you know, all those one-time annual costs. So typically, we receive, in September, we receive, you know, our first allotments of the Avolaram, the sales and use, the utility, franchise tax, and we receive our first allocation of the power bill. So, just stay tuned for that. If you have any questions.
So, you're saying that small amount that we collected this year is pretty much in line with what it normally is the first year?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, because we just received our June sales tax Monday, and that was for June, so.
All right. Does anybody have any questions, Finance Director? All right. Thank you, ma'am, for your report. Does anything else that needs to come before the council this evening? If there be none, a call for motion to adjourn? Motion by Mr. Bell, second by Mr. Stainback. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If those know, adjourn.